We're on. Meeting will come to order. Welcome to this Monday, May 6th, meeting, a regular City Council meeting. We have just completed an executive session, which was to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101G. And that ran for approximately an hour and a half. So now we run, we come to a regular meeting. We will, after the regular meeting, go back into executive session to continue what we started. So, at the moment, Deb, could you call, roll, please?
Mayor Bruce Bassett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Gross?
Here.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland?
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brahm?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Searle?
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady?
Here.
And Councilmember Tanisun Sin.
Thank you. Mike, you're flagging me down. Is there something I'm?
No, Mike and I were just exchanging hand signals because our son played Valuet.
Ah, okay.
Which is why I'm leaving late. I'm a Dino, but.
Excellent. That's what we like to hear.
And lacrosse.
Ah, congratulations.
Looked like you actually played.
My son, yeah. Debbie, Debbie came in earlier saying that the, uh, Debbie.
That's why the air conditioning.
Debbie came in earlier saying that the back room, when she came in late, smelled kinda stinky, and now we're gonna add you to it, so it's only gonna get better.
It's my note.
All right. Yes, we come, we come to appearance. Uh, no, we're gonna, Bruce, are you gonna give us an announcement on the results of the auction first? Let's do that, and then we'll go to public appearances.
For the record, Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I'm here with some really good news. Councilmember Burtland and I attended the Mercer Island Parks and Rec, uh, Mercer Island Preschool Association Auction on Saturday night. And working with the preschool association, decade, decade, and decade.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it is.
Deb, you may want to hit the switch there.
Okay. Try that again. Bruce Fletcher, Director of Parks and Recreation. Anyways, the Mercer Island Preschool Association Auction happened on Saturday, and the city's been ahead of partnership with this association for decades and decades, and really helped out on playground equipment. And this auction, 100% of proceeds were going to the Lothu Burbank Playground Program, or, uh, project. And as you recall, they already committed $25,000 before we even started. And Saturday night, a minimum of 21,500 was raised on a very fun evening. The community spirit was amazing. At the end, Councilmember Burtland and I high-fived, actually hugged, because it was such a great night. And just wanted to give you an update, that they're working very hard. Um, the co-presidents, Sarah Leclerc and Kim Thomas, they've been working with us for about a year, and they've been part of the Playground Replacement Committee, and things are going really well. And we will definitely thank them later. They'll probably bring one of those big checks to give to you, and we'll get a picture with the mayor. So just, that's it. And Councilmember Burtland might have a few quotes as well.
I mean, it was just a spectacular event. I think, as Bruce said, the community spirit was just out in full force. It was a fun evening. Everybody was there, I think, with the right attitude. And thanks, of course, to Bruce and Diane, who was there as well, and some of their various family members. So, it was great. And it wasn't, the thing that really touched me is it wasn't just preschool association members. There were, there was representation from a variety of the different communities and demographics on this island. So, yeah, cleared $20,000, and it was really good fun.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we come to appearances. Time when anyone may address the council on the issue they choose to speak about. You have three minutes. Please begin by giving your name and address, and, yep, it's in audience. Bob, you're gonna come down and speak, I hope? All right. Please restrain yourself from boisterous, impertinent, or slanderous remarks. With that, the floor is open. No one, no one. Ira, you want it? No? Okay, we close public comments.
We'll put your comments and then redo it.
Minutes. Special joint meeting minutes of April 11, 2013. Hope for a mayor move to approve the minutes.
Second.
And, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment or a change I'd like to do on page two, um, about halfway down, starting with the paragraph, Councilmember Seero.
Okay.
And if you go on the, um, the first "and" there, right out, right after the comprehensive plan, it would be "change, Ann stated that he believed the city has an objective of the island population to," and "he questioned the wisdom of the island's population objective." The changes, I think, are the intent of what my comment was.
Are you gonna have other comments, or just this one? Just wanna make sure we know whether we oughta send this one back?
I think that's the only one I have, yeah.
Okay, so help me to actually, uh, help all of us to actually write in what exactly it is you're, you're envisioning. Okay. Okay, so we would, um, and, starting with.
Because you were not.
Ann stated?
No.
Questioned.
So it's "change, Ann stated that he believed the city had an objective of the island population." Oh, Ann stated that he had.
He questioned. Change stated that to questioned.
Ann changed that to, "And he questioned the wisdom of the island's population objective."
Oh, yeah, and that makes sense when you put it into that sentence.
Yeah, so the sentence becomes, "Councilmember Seero referred to the city's comprehensive plan, and he questioned the wisdom of the island's population objective going from 22,000 to 26,000 by the year 2020."
I feel a little concerned that we're getting into semantics, in the sense that you could say it's not the city's, the island's objective, it is the growth management's, growth management act's objective.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where I said, I, I stated it was the city's objective, right, wrong, or indifferent, as documented in the comprehensive plan.
And, and you reviewed the video and.
Actually, the video hasn't been up.
Okay.
I kinda lost, quit looking for it. But I certainly know that I made, the intent of what I said, and the tone of what I said was, um, not agreeing with the objective. I think that's fairly well-recognized, that, that's where I stand on it.
Yeah. Okay. I'm comfortable with that change. Do we, we always get into this, do we send it back? Do we do a motion to change it? What do we? Help? Deb, your call. You wanna, uh, make a motion with the recommended change, or do you wanna take 'em back and amend? Bring 'em back?
Go ahead and do the motion at this point. We'll include it in the minutes.
Okay.
These minutes will stand as is, and they'll say revised next to it, and then the minutes for tonight will reflect the amendment.
Got it.
So, make your motion with the suggested revision.
The motion's already, it's already been moved to adopt these minutes, right? In a second.
And he's making a motion for a revision.
Making a motion for a revision, okay.
Yeah. And.
Why don't I just make the.
Just keep this simple, guys. Come on, all we do is, let's just change the minutes. He wanted to change the minutes, so just change the wording in the minutes, and we'll adopt the minutes as revised.
Do we need a motion to change the minutes?
No, we don't need a motion. We just, Mike has moved it.
Katie, you okay with the Dan School of Legal Philosophy here, which says, "Just do it"?
You can just move to accept the minutes as amended.
What do we do about the existing motion?
You could, or you could move to amend, and that you could either withdraw the first one. I'd rather you, I'd rather you follow the process, so why don't you just?
Just go to the mo, the person that made the motion and ask them if they would move to.
Like, withdraw the motion.
Sure. And.
Mr. Mayor, move to withdraw my previous motion.
And second.
And hopefully we can fix this problem quicker. You don't have to move to withdraw.
And now make the motion to approve as amended.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
There you go.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. All right. So much for moving fast. April 22nd, uh, special joint meeting minutes with the Mercer Island School District.
That was the first, that was the, we just did.
It's an air in title.
Oh, air in title, yeah, it's just, uh.
Got it. Okay, so regular meeting minutes of April 22.
You want to move to amend the title?
Yeah, with the title corrected, please. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of April 22, 2013.
Second.
Comments, changes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar. We have Payables Payroll, Agenda Bill 4837, Open Space Conservancy Trust Board Annual Report, and Agenda Bill 4836, Biennial Open Space Progress Report and Work Plan.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar as written.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Excellent, got through that.
We're going to pull the last of our audience.
Thank you for being here. Move to regular business. Agenda Bill 4840, Status Report on City Work Plan to Oppose I-90 Tolling. Deputy City Manager, Treat.
Good evening, Noel Treat, Deputy City Manager, with tonight's status report, and I am happy to say we've got some good news on the I-90 tolling opposition front. So, let me jump into the status report, and we'll talk a little bit about what that good news is. My agenda, we give you a status report, give you a quick overview of the EIS legislation. You had a copy of that legislation in your packet. It's got some good things for us in it. We'll also talk a little bit about a letter to the Puget Sound Regional Council, and I'll talk about how the EIS and a study by the PSRC might be coordinated, and then we'll have time for questions and discussion. So first, on the environmental study. As you know, we had some success in the legislature, and it, the adopted legislation requiring that an EIS be done around the I-90 tolling proposal. WashDOT has not yet gotten back to us to let us know they're thinking on what this means for their timeline or their next steps, so some of that is to be determined. But this is a move in the direction that we'd been advocating since the very beginning of the EA process, so this, this is a good step. We are still seeking, and I'll talk a little bit more about that legislation in a minute. We're still seeking a meeting with the new Secretary of Transportation. Still haven't been successful with that. Hopefully, you know, with a little downtime before the next, the special session starts, we'll get an opportunity, but, but I'm not sure. It's been, it's been hard to get on her schedule. Litigation strategy. There's been, um, a trial court decision in the Portsmouth litigation that we've been monitoring, and I'll ask the city attorney to give you a quick update on that.
Sure. The plaintiff citizen group that was suing to stop the tolling were successful in their summary judgment motion at the Circuit Court level, which was like our Superior Court level. There's no news yet as to whether the state is going to appeal that. It was all on state issues with regard to the constitutionality, whether they could toll, and the constitutionality under their own state constitution. So we'll continue to keep track of it, but that was good news for now.
Are we, I guess we're gonna do the same as we always do, wait till we brief everything and serve it back?
If you don't mind.
All right. On the state legislature front, as I mentioned, we got the EIS legislation. The legislature didn't finish their business on the budget side in particular, so they're coming back for a special session, which starts May 13th. I think the plan is for it to run 30 days. You might recall, we discussed at the last meeting that there'd been a proposal for a, an additional three-cent gas tax to pay for the remaining portion of the 520 project if other funding did not get authorized by 2000, July of 2015. What we're hearing from our lobbyists and others is that that proposal is probably not likely to survive, and, um, probably won't, won't be seen again when the special session starts. But we're, we're gonna continue to advocate there and continue to watch that one. On the federal front, we've still got our team working with Congressman Smith's, Adam Smith's office in particular, and are still in the phase of planning some next steps with Federal Highways Administration. As you see in the packet, we had another big success, which was pulling, you know, we really kicked this idea off. It gained its own momentum, and we got a lot of parties on board to sign this regional letter calling for a broader study, study of tolling, given that the state's plan is apparently to toll most of the regional roadways. What, what we suggested to others, and what ultimately the region agreed to in the letter, to ask for is a study by PSRC to look at, in a system-wide way, at tolling. That hasn't been done to date. The state has been proceeding in a piecemeal fashion. They've gone from roadway to roadway. So this letter went to PSRC and to WashDOT, asking that a regional study be conducted. That study, it was asked, that study include looking at alternative funding, alternatives to tolls. And so that study is now with PSRC, and I'll talk a little bit more in a minute about the status of, of that study and where that might go. Along the same vein, Sound Cities Association has queued up a policy position that's very much in sync with the request in the regional letter, and they're taking that again, up again this month, maybe for final action. And then finally, on the public information front, we're continuing to send email updates to constituents. I'm happy to report that all the po, all the responses we get are positive. People are very happy to get those updates. We've also recently updated the webpage to retool it just a little bit, and included some additional new information. And we're still planning to do some community outreach focused on organizations, hopefully soon. We need to, we need to nail down some dates. So now on to the EIS legislation. I wanted to make sure you're aware of its three key requirements. First, of course, is that an EIS is required in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act. Second, the legislation specifically requires that the EIS look at impacts to the network of highways and roads around Lake Washington. So it's trying to, to force it to take this broader look at traffic diversion impacts. And then finally, in a, in a very important provision for us, is it requires study of all funding alternatives to tolling, which is something that the EA probably never would have done. So this is a, this is a real big difference from what the EA, that was originally planned by WashDOT, would have looked at. So that's good. Which sort of leads us to the question, what did we get? How great is it that we get an EIS instead of an EA? And so what I thought I might do tonight, we, I'll come back in a future session and probably give you a little bit more of a primer on the EIS process, once we've, understand where the state is going, what their timeline might be. But what I thought I might do tonight is just, at a very high level, highlight for you the differences between an EIS and an EA, just so you get a sense of how this study might differ from what we would have seen under the EA process. So first, in general, an EIS, it's got more content requirements, and it's got a lot more public process requirements. An EA really is designed to document a lack of impacts, so that an agency can get to a finding of no significant impacts, which lets them then make a decision without trying to mitigate environmental or other impacts. An EA, as a result, is usually pretty short, and doesn't examine impacts in very much detail, which is what we might have ended up with from WashDOT, had they stuck with the EA process. An EIS, on the other hand, has to fully study and disclose all significant impacts, so it has to be a fairly thorough study, and it has to look at a broader range of impacts. In particular, the state has to solicit and respond to comments. Unlike the EA process, if, if the state gets comments in the EA process, it doesn't have to necessarily respond to them. The EIS process requires specifically responding to comments that are critical of the study, or talking about impacts that need to be considered, those sorts of things. The state has to, to look at comments and respond. And then finally, an EIS has to look at a much broader range of alternatives. An EA doesn't necessarily have to look at alternatives at all. As a result of these extra requirements, sort of the, you know, these aren't hard and fast rules, but generally, an EA is done in less than a year, and an EIS usually takes two years and sometimes more. So the next question is, now that we've got an EIS in the queue for the I-90 tolling proposal, how does that relate to the potential study that PSRC might undertake? And first, of course, I want to point out, PSRC has not yet agreed to do that study that's requested. We do know that they're having conversations with the county and with the state about how they might do that, and they're also thinking about how they might fund doing that. So that's, it's still an open question whether they're gonna pick this up and run with it. The basic distinction right now is that the EIS, as it's queued up, would be focused more narrowly, only on I-90, and only on what are the impacts of tolling I-90, whereas the PSRC study would really look more broadly at all the region's roadways, and what the impacts of the state's total tolling plan would be for the region. It's unclear if both these studies proceed, how they'd be linked. And I've thought of three basic scenarios, and this is a place where we'll probably wanna hopefully have a, a chance to weigh in and, and help advocate a direction. So first, you could have each study simply proceed on its own with little or no coordination with the other. The EIS could proceed as if there were no PS, broader PSRC study. Second is you could have two studies, two separate studies proceed, but with some kind of organized coordination between the two, so that they supplement one another. And then finally, an, an option would be that the two studies are essentially merged into only one study, and that one EIS is done on this whole broad question of tolling in this region, and whether, what are the impacts? What are the alternatives? Is this the direction we want to go? If, if it's combined into one study, there's also the question of, you know, who would conduct it? Would it be WashDOT? Would it be PSRC? Would it be jointly led? So that, that leads to some other questions. I, you know, we do, as I mentioned, we do know that PSRC is talking with the state and starting to think about some of this, but we don't yet know how this is gonna turn out.
Noel, just for a second, you, you used the phrase "you could" with reference to these different options. Can you elaborate a little bit on who makes these decisions?
Yes, sorry.
You're sort of implying it's our decision?
No, it is, it is not our.
I wanted to, give you a chance to clarify.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Sorry for that. It is not our decision at all. This is a decision that will be made by the state and by PSRC. Whether or not PSRC undertakes a study is a decision that PSRC will have to make. And it's a decision that's separate from the state's decision to proceed with the EIS. The state must proceed with the EIS now that the legislation's in place. But then, how the two studies would be coordinated, whether they'd be combined into one, the decision around that is a decision that would have to be jointly made between PSRC and WashDOT. So those are the decision-makers now, on this question. It's not us. We can hope to influence that decision, but we, we don't make it. So it's to be determined. How, how will these studies proceed? Will the, will the PSR study proceed? And then if so, how will they be linked?
Mike?
Noel, what's the role of federal highway in the EIS decision-making process?
Well, ultimately, federal highways, you know, since it's being conducted under NEPA, federal highways has an oversight role on WashDOT's EIS process. There are regulations under NEPA that require coordination with similar or related studies, so there may be some legal basis to argue that federal highways needs to force WashDOT to work with PSRC if PSRC were to implement a study. But they do have some influence over WashDOT's decision-making, because they ultimately have, they must ultimately blast WashDOT's process. So, so they do, you're right. There, there is a third decision-maker here, potentially, yeah.
The other wrinkle that I might just throw in here, and I don't know if you're gonna cover it, Noel, was, um, one of the issues that has come up is the issue of increased congestion, particularly in areas of disadvantaged communities, or is, for instance, in Renton or South Seattle. That could then bring in EPA into the NEPA process, and then they would need to address air quality issues, water quality issues, public health, environmental justice, so it could be rather extensive.
Yes, under the EIS, once that process is triggered, it could bring in EPA, and it could require looking at a whole host of issues that WashDOT would not have looked at under the EA, absolutely. All right, that's what I've got.
So, I kinda hesitate to even ask this one, because it just, it just dawned on me, and you and I obviously talk a lot about this stuff, but you said the, the three-cent language likely won't survive, but we're talking about this other language, the EIS language, as if it's a done deal, but aren't they both within the same?
No, they're, they're in separate legislation.
They are?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The legislation that has the EIS language has been adopted by the.
Yes, the.
Yeah. It's the, it's the transportation budget, it's already been approved and signed.
Okay.
Or maybe signed, but it's going to.
And transportation, new revenue package is what will be in the special session.
Okay, so questions for Noel, Dan, then Debbie, and then Mike?
The, um, so on the EIS, are they gonna start the scoping process all over again?
Well, you know, that's one of the open questions. There, there aren't specific regulations that explain what an agency has to do if they started on an EA path and did a whole scoping, and then shifted to EIS. Do they have to do a whole new scoping or not? We think there's an argument that they need to at least do some reopening of the scoping, because there's now, for instance, a new requirement statutorily, that they look at alternative funding, which they, they weren't asking questions about in the EA scoping. So we think they probably should reopen some kind of scoping, but we don't know yet.
I guess that the major question I think we need to consider is, given the change in the landscape here, is whether we need to revisit the work plan. Because we were at a very fast-track work plan for a while, and depending on what's gonna happen now, we could be going into a, sort of a deep freeze period for a while. And I guess we need to understand from you, and maybe from outside council, and Katie, if necessary, to weigh in on, on whether we should be looking at a, a different work plan, or whether we should be making some changes to it.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. And then we're meeting later this week with KNL Gates to, to start talking about what is, what does this CIS path mean for us and for timing? And so we'll come back and talk with you more about that, and with an eye towards what does it mean for the work plan.
One last comment. I just, I think it's important to mention, and, and you mentioned in your, your email to the, to the community, is that, you know, that what went through the legislature was the, as a result of the efforts of Senator Lizzo and Representative Cliver. I mean, they, they both, without their support, this would never have happened, and I think the, we need to recognize that, and the community needs to understand that that's, that's what made this all come together.
Yeah, that's absolutely, absolutely right, and we're thankful to them for their assistance, and they got this through.
Debbie?
Yeah, I wanted to get your perspective and a, and a point of clarification. So, in the legislation that you attached, I'm actually looking at rows 17 through 19. It calls out that the purpose of the potential tolling is twofold. It's first, to manage traffic, and second, provide funding for the construction of the unfunded portion. And this is an important call-out, because historically, the program that they were looking at using to potentially toll the road was more about congestion management versus a lot of the public discussion and positioning had been very much about the funding. So I see that these are both in here. Does this represent an official position change, or combining of those two elements? Whereas before, I think we pretty much just had a funding discussion going on.
It's, it's not a change. That same exact language was in the old legislation that predates even this year from the, from the last legislative session. So that's what's been in the legislation now, going back in time. They tend, at least until we started raising the federal law question, they tended to, WashDOT tended, in their presentations, to not really mention much about congestion relief, and only talk about revenue. So I think they've, you know, they now realize that they have got.
They've wised up.
They've really gotta play up the congestion aspect. But, but that's always been in the legislation. Yeah, that's not brand new.
So it's not a formal change?
No.
But there's probably going to be a position modification?
Right.
Okay.
Mike?
Well, Councilmember Burtland, I think that's a good observation, and what the deputy city manager said was, WashDOT will probably change their message. So in our new work plan, if we develop a new work plan, we may want to think about preempting that new and different message, because it's a message to, that WashDOT will change for, to satisfy the outcomes that they eventually want. Purpose of need statement. That'll be critical to the EIS. What kind of purpose of need statement do we want?
Well, I think, I think we want it to be broad, and we want it, certainly it's gonna have to include looking at alternative funding. So I think, I mean, those are some of the key elements we want to get in that statement.
And who makes the purpose of need statement?
Ultimately, it's, it's the official at WashDOT that makes a decision about what that final statement will be. But those are, that's the type of question we'll be, we'll be looking to KNL Gates to help us.
Okay, good. Okay, good.
Help us make sure we make the right strategic decisions and ask for the right thing in that purpose-of-need statement.
And when, so this comes back to timeline, and EA is less than a year, and EIS is two years. Give me a feel for when that stopwatch started for both the EA and EIS?
Well, the EA would have started when they...
February.
In February, that's right. We don't know now what, when the clock's going to start because we don't know, you know, I've reached out to WashDOT a couple of times and haven't had any response yet as to what do you all think your timeline's going to be? When are you going to start? When are you going to make a decision about next steps? So we're not sure. So I would say the EIS clock may not be ticking at all yet.
Or worst case, it started ticking on in February. I mean, it would just roll the EA over?
To the extent that they can use some of the EA work to inform their scoping, there's some ground maybe they can gain there.
In our last meeting with WashDOT staff, it was clear they want to continue on with some of the work that they had already planned on in the EA, thinking that it doesn't matter, EA or EIS, they still need to do it. A lot of that had to do with surveying Mercer Island public about travel behavior. So it's entirely possible you will see sometime in the next several months that happening and independent from their timing on the EIS. They may just do it anyway because they feel they're going to need to collect that data. So it may kind of feel like, from our point of view, a bit of fits and starts, and from their point of view, it's just moving the ball forward.
What Craig Stone had told the Transportation Committee at the time was that he thought doing EIS would take them somewhere beyond the 2014 session, and that therefore, if the legislature was going to consider tolling, it would therefore push it into the 2015 session.
I talked to Representative Cliver last week and asked that very point. She said what would happen would be, and it's likely the legislature would still address the question, and if tolling I-90 is authorized, it would be authorized contingent upon completion of the environmental process. So she's saying it's still on the books, and this isn't what she wants. This is what her colleagues want, to have a 2014 timeline still stay the same as far as the legislature is concerned. In terms of the EIS taking way beyond that, it's very likely to happen, but they would still do an authorization contingent upon completion of the environmental work.
Yep. Mike?
Yeah, a couple things. Because of the issues involved with NEPA, I think what we need to discuss is coming with a letter that goes to federal highways and WashDOT and potentially EPA as well, stating in advance what we want them to look at. And it gets to the purpose-of-need issue because they're going to need to have agreement among the respective agencies on that. They're going to need to do public outreach and have a series of workshops to discuss purpose and need. And then that will get to the study area because what we're really pushing for is expanding the study area so it's system-wide and it's not just on the corridor. So to what extent we can expand the study area, we've got a chance to bring in a lot of other players and address a lot of issues that heretofore WashDOT has not done, like the public health and the environmental issues. And then lastly, as part of the alternative process, they're going to need to identify the least environmentally damaging alternative. So I think we ought to put our heads together and figure out, okay, what is that, and just get it right out on the record now, as opposed to waiting for WashDOT and federal highways to figure it out, and then they continue doing whatever they're doing, and they may or may not, you know, keep us abreast. I think, you know, the more we're running the train and driving in the right direction, I think the better we have a chance of molding what's going to be in that EIS. And I have to say, you know, thanks to Bruce and Noel and the team that you've got, you've got a letter that's perfect, you know, asking the right questions. You're putting the pressure on the feds, which is really important because to what extent we can even get an answer from the delegation and the feds on the tolling issue, that, you know, that could even shortchange the EIS and force them, instead of looking at tolling, to look at alternative financing. So I think everything's been perfect up to now, but my main advice would be, let's stay in front, let's play offense, and let's identify what we want and get that out in the public record.
I like that idea. I think that's a very good idea.
So that idea was, again, just to brief back, was to write a letter to FHWA showing our position?
With WashDOT.
Yeah, I think when we meet with Gates later this week, I think part of what's going to come out of that is we're going to plan the next correspondence, which needs to happen quickly, which is going to lay out a couple of things, both what we think the right process is, and I think what we think the right process is, is that they can't simply borrow the EA scoping and pretend that that's the EIS scoping as well. They need to step back and start over. So we're going to have an argument about process, and then we also need to weigh in, as Councilmember Grady was saying, what we think the least damaging alternative is, among other things. So I think that's probably one of our next legal steps, is a letter like that. That will go to a number of parties. It'll go to WashDOT, and it will go to federal highways.
I think some of this also, if we can build upon the coalition letter and use, I mean, I agree completely with Mike, we should be out front on this thing in terms of, from a legal letter, but maybe the next step after that is a coalition letter reinforcing some of the same points and also maybe looking at the least impactful alternative, having the coalition actually try to make that proposal instead of just Mercer Island. But, I mean, somehow, we've got this coalition now that's been put together, and we should try to continue it and try to keep them active.
And on that, Wednesday night is the next Suburban Cities Association meeting, and there's a proposal, policy proposal, that is very similar to this in that it's the sweeping, let's look at the whole region and look at tolling across the board and not just in this one corridor. And so I think that will also continue the pressure, and it seems like that has lots of broad support already. A lot of those players have also signed on to this PSRC letter, and so I think that will help have that broader regional coalition putting on pressure as well.
But we have a steering committee meeting on Thursday, I think, so we can hopefully make some, I don't think we should be waiting for the next council meeting. I think, based upon what's being said here, that, and then clearly, there's a desire on the part of the council to get out in front of this thing and look for a letter out of K and L Gates relatively quickly.
Mike, and then Richie had something?
All right, three more. So the Portsmouth, can you get into more of that? Where would we have the opportunity to engage in Portsmouth?
Well, at this point, even the city of Portsmouth is not engaged. They gave some monies, but that's what they've done. They're not a party to the litigation. But at this point, we don't know if in fact the state is going to appeal the decision from the circuit court or go back and revisit other methods rather than what they proposed with regard to the tolling. So my suggestion is, we just continue to monitor that, those usually roughly a month after the decision is made or after the decision is made by the court, where they have to give a notice of appeal. So in the event that there's anything that looks like we might be able to jump in, certainly we have plenty of time to do that. I would point out again that this was all with regard to Virginia State constitutional issues, which are obviously unrelated to Washington State Constitution, but I think there's plenty of time to step back, take a look at it, because obviously, we don't want to spend $50,000 trying to get up to speed on something if they ultimately decide not to appeal it.
I understand, but you gave two scenarios. So one scenario was an appeal. So if they appealed, then it would be appropriate for us to shift to the next level of conversation in getting the amicus or something? Is that, if appeal, then city Mercer Island engaged the amicus? Is that what I'm hearing?
If, we should know within a month if the state has chosen to appeal.
Well, that's not what I'm asking about. I'm saying, just anticipating our timeline. If they do appeal, I mean, I'm not an attorney, obviously. If they do appeal, then that's when we would engage.
If the council chooses at that time to engage, it's difficult to know what issues they'll appeal on or whether that will be relevant to the city.
Yeah, Katie, isn't it also true that a Virginia court would have to determine whether or not a city 3,000 miles away in the state of Washington has any standing, even submitting an amicus brief if, on state of Virginia issues?
Correct.
Because the lawsuit wasn't on the same issues that we are contesting what's going on out here. So one question is whether or not a Virginia court would even accept a brief from us.
That would be one of the process pieces where we would have to apply in order to file an amicus brief. And again, I guess the point is, at this time, we don't have to answer those questions as to the relevancy of whether we're going to jump in, if we don't even know if they're going to appeal. But yes, there's a number of process pieces that we'd have to jump through first.
I guess what I'd ask the steering committee is to war game the scenario where if all the pieces align, then we would give the Portsmouth-Virginia our two cents worth. Kind of off on left field here, the FOIA, was that put online?
Correct. Yeah, as we've been receiving documents from WashDOT, we've been posting those on our webpage.
Okay.
So people can access those.
And do you have to do another FOIA to get up-to-date information?
We will.
Last conversations that FHWA and WashDOT has had from the last time you made the FOI request, et cetera?
Yes, and so we're going to be doing, we'll be renewing that in the near term. So we've sort of got, we've got all the documents now that postdate our first request, and now we're going to need to make, we're going to need to make future subsequent requests to capture new documents.
Good, good. Last question, Mr. Mayor, please. And the interstate tolling study that Citizen was so gracious, and that's the status on that with our council, our council reviewing?
You're talking about that Chris Muller information? So Noel, you said you were going to have further conversation?
Yeah, our legal counsel has a copy of what Chris provided, and they've taken a look at it. I think, I mean, I think by and large, the legal arguments that are laid out there are the same ones that we've made to FHWA. I don't think there's a lot of distinction between them. I think we've got most of those. He had a couple of other ideas that were helpful, but they're all going to be part of what we use as we continue to press with Adam Smith's office for pressing FHWA on the legal front.
Good, okay, thank you.
Okay. And Richie?
Yeah, I thought I'd try and summarize a little bit about the conversation I had with Representative Cliver on Friday. It was both enlightening and at times it created more questions than answers. And it's because she laid out for me the, just how complex decision-making is in Olympia, particularly at the end of a session, going into a special session. And so I came away with a couple takeaways. It's way complicated. What we see are just a handful of the factors that are being played with because we care about those factors, the I-90 tolling and maybe the PSRC study. But down there, there are lots of other topics, like the overall budget, the transportation budget, and then a series of others, just pieces of legislation that a particular legislator wants to push forward and get connected to something else so it gets passed. So while I couldn't follow all of it because it was just so many things going on, I concluded that we should, and I think everybody does, but just be cautiously optimistic, but don't let up because there are decisions that could well happen, the trade-off, tolling on I-90 for something absolutely unrelated to it. And the other takeaway I got was, the more the door opens for studying real alternative funding sources, the more likely it gives people political room to do something other than toll I-90. And I think Judy was just trying to be honest. It's not her. It's the legislature as a body. They want to toll I-90 because that's what's going to pay for 520. And what they care about is paying for the rest of that bridge. And that's the one funding source they all have been eyeballing for several years now. The federal issues, I think, are a clear avenue to get people's attention, to help them move towards thinking about alternative funding sources. We need to push both. Without that, I think there'll be an uphill climb.
Okay. Noel, you're all set?
I am, unless you have any other questions.
I would just also report that I had the pleasure of being interviewed by King Five and was on KVI Conservative Talk Radio for a few minutes in the last week, too. So that was interesting. King Five, I can tell you that I look like a neurotic hand-waver, but so be it, yeah. Other than that, I think the message was the right message, so.
Chris Lambock?
Yeah, that was John Carlsen. Noel, thank you very much. If there's nothing else, we will move on to Agenda Bill 4835, adoption of the 2012 construction codes.
This is exciting stuff. This is really...
Mike's dialing up a whole new...
Welcome, Don.
Did you write this all yourself, then?
As you probably remember, every three years, the state of Washington requires that we adopt the new construction codes.
And let me get you a pause. I want to make sure your mic's on or that you're close enough for...
I didn't mean to just speak into it a little bit more.
Yeah.
For those who feel like the time.
Yeah.
Chris Muller.
Yeah, I think you got him? Okay.
It's on, yeah. So one more time, Don Colville, unofficial. Every three years, the state of Washington requires that we adopt the newest construction codes. Again, it's mandated by the state to be effective July 1, 2013. In the agenda bill on Exhibit 2, we had a lot of the significant changes to the codes for your review. The only optional amendments that we made was some administrative changes to be consistent with our regional model code, the MyBuildingPermit.com cities, and then Appendix J of the fire code was adopted to provide a building information sign. The Option 1 changes to the administrative provisions are really to remain consistent in the region to provide our permit applicants consistent administrative enforcement. And it also improves administrative provisions. If you adopted all of those different codes, they each have their own administrative provisions, then they conflict sometimes. This actually resolves those conflicts. It also helps align us with our municipal code to make sure that we administer that the same way as our municipal code. So it's a great improvement.
Chris?
Good evening, Council for the Record, Chris Tubbs, Fire Chief. As Don mentioned earlier, the only new piece that we have added in the fire code is Appendix J. What Appendix J requires for buildings, commercial buildings, is a sign that's six-by-six in size that provides five categories of information. Don, you have a picture of it in here? Placed on the entrance of the building so that when firefighters arrive, they've got five basic pieces of information that help with firefighter safety and tactics and things like that.
So that's really, in a nutshell, basically it. Again, the changes that were really minor in nature that we're allowed to make options to. So our recommendation at this time is to suspend the first and second reading and adopt the code to be effective July 1, 2013.
So I'm just curious, can we go back to the picture of the six-by-six inch sign? Because what is that, what would that tell me if I was a firefighter?
I'm going to call Herschel Rostov up here for a second. He can help explain. It's all new to me still.
You better not go out to the fire.
Herschel Rostov, Assistant Fire Marshal. Each section shows different bits of information. The top, for example, shows what type of building construction, if it's wood frame construction or if it's fire-rated construction, so that you know when you get to the building how the building's going to behave under fire conditions. So it explains the type of building construction. The bottom, for example, talks about what type of occupancies are in the building. Do we have a school-type of occupancy in part of the building? Is it a mercantile? What other types of things, of businesses, that we have in there? The others are for different types of fire suppression systems. Do we have a sprinkler system in the building? Do we have stand pipes in the building? So each little bit provides a piece of information for the incoming company officers to be able to paint a better picture of how we can tactically do the best job of fighting the fire, but also to protect different types of occupants and have the best safety level for the firefighters that are arriving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay.
So you might as well stay out there. I've got some questions.
Okay.
So you know how I like regulations, new additional regulations. So I'm going to ask you, I'll be critical of that. Don't we have a program, the Fire Department, don't they have a program that when XYZ building is up in flames, they're being fed that, I thought we, we had software that would feed critical information to the firefighters already? So is this not redundant? Is it not redundant from that aspect? And is it not redundant, redundant from the perspective of, you know, we're a relatively small community, you know the buildings, we have a long, long longevity on the Fire Department, we don't have new guys, we don't have transition. Are we doing this just to do this? Is it not redundant on those two levels?
There are a couple of things to look at. First of all, time in a quick decision is really important when you show up on an incident. And so being able to digest a lot of information in that response time from getting from the station to the scene, that takes a lot of, a lot of time. You can't digest all of that information really if it were available. This is a really succinct, easy way to look at a symbol that gives us each point of information and helps us make that decision really quickly. As far as receiving information in other forms, we get little bits of information on our dispatch printout, like the location of the Fire Department connections. We don't have an incorporated pre-fire plan that is sent to us by the dispatch system. So there isn't an automated system that we respond to on a regular basis. This would be our best way to have that information to fight the fire.
And one other point that I would add, Councilman Cero, is it's not just the firefighters on the island that we're concerned about. As you know, we have very strong automatic aid with Bellevue and the surrounding Eastside cities, and this is as much for incoming units from those jurisdictions as it is for ourselves.
So who updates the signs when the use changes, when the storage, when stuff is stored and their changes? Who's responsible for that?
The code provision actually calls for it to be an item during the annual inspection that the fire crew does.
So this is only on commercial buildings or only on...
It is, it is only on commercial multifamily-type buildings, yes.
Other questions?
So ADU units who wouldn't?
Wouldn't not apply.
No. It would not apply.
On the first option you talked about, Don, where is that in the code? I wasn't, wasn't clear to me, the changes to the administrative provisions.
Yeah, so in each of the codes that are being adopted, they have a Chapter 1, which is administrative provisions, which talks about, you know, basically fees, fines, enforcement procedures and so forth. So each of the different codes has a different potential set of administrative provisions. So we actually have a single administrative provision that we've made some changes to.
Where is it in this, on which page would I look at for that?
Um...
It just didn't jump out at me, maybe.
No, it's going to be the last section here. It starts on page 23. And again, that was adopted since 2003 when the uniform codes, which used to have a single administrative code, was replaced by the international codes. So the local jurisdictions, instead of trying to spend all the man hours trying to reconcile the differences in codes, every year they adopted this single code. So the changes we make now are only to a single code.
Mike, Dan, are you okay digesting for a minute while we do a couple others? Okay, Mike?
Okay. So, you know, I'm a big fan, I kind of, we kind of go through this every once in a while. Why we just don't adopt these codes without all this other stuff in here? So for instance, on page 21, it talks about fire flow, and it just happens to be fire that I look up. I'm sure it's the same, there are other examples because there's 25, 26 pages here. But on page 21, it talks about fire flow, measured 20 pounds per square inch. I mean, isn't, isn't that in the mechanical code? Isn't there a standard in the mechanical code to that?
There isn't a standard in the mechanical code that relates specifically to that. It's about how much water pressure is going to be required for the measurement in order to not deplete the water pressure in our houses at a fire incident where it would pollute the water. That's where that comes from. That's why the 20 PSI is picked. And it's not the same in the mechanical, this is a different subject.
So that's not addressed in any of these codes right here to where we could...
No.
Actually, Mike, that section there is, that's not changed. That is actually right out of the code. That is an appendix item. It just says that they measure that fire flow at 20 PSI.
That's out of what code?
That's the Fire Code. But that's, but is, there's no, no change to that. That is actually verbatim out of the Fire Code.
Yeah, I know, but I guess my point is, is that, I mean, Merschel Island doesn't write the Fire Code. Either the state or the national level writes Fire Code. And my point is, it would be so much more efficient if we just referenced the state Fire Code, in which case I'm sure the state Fire Code has some sort of fire flow that considers flowback. But maybe not.
I can jump in here, too. This is, because this is the international Fire Code. This has been reviewed at the international level. It's been reviewed at the national level, it's reviewed at the state level, and then the recommendations are given to each municipality. So what Don and the rest of the staff has done is tried to coordinate that with our own code.
I think the answer, Mike's question, is when you do adopt this, you are actually adopting updates to the Fire Code by reference. You are doing exactly what you're suggesting.
Well, but wouldn't that mean that...
And this is just documentation of what the adjustments have been since the last three years.
Oh, so this isn't in our, our code?
These are, what you're seeing here, the changes to what was on the books three years ago. Every three years, they do certain updates.
Onto our books.
By reference, they've become our books, yes.
Okay.
But is your question why we don't just say we, we adopt the state building code?
Yeah, my question is, my question is, why is this packet 25 pages instead of we've just adopted...
They're just trying to do transparency, to show you all the, the changes that are coming our way.
You know my hot button.
It worked.
So if I could, a question, I'm over on Exhibit 2, and the third bullet from the bottom on the first page of that, I guess page 30, says 75% of luminaries within dwelling units must be high efficacy lamps. And my question is, do, do we have the option of saying, no, no, we want that to be 100%?
You could go higher than that. That's a minimum.
Okay. So that would be part of a conversation we would have here separately about changes to the code from a green building perspective. And obviously, that comes with both the pros and cons of being different, I guess, and the benefits from a green perspective, downsides from a, now we're odd compared to other cities. Can you talk maybe just a bit about the, you know, what headaches I create by suggesting that kind of thing?
I misunderstood your full, your entire question. An individual could go higher than that. It's a minimum that an individual doing their residence has to put 75%.
Yeah, no, but I'm asking if the code, if we could set a more stringent code.
Yeah, that's what I was going to get to, yeah. As far as the city being more stringent for a single-family residence, we cannot without state approval. We need to get state approval. That was part of the code adoption. So we cannot be more restrictive or less restrictive without state approval for single-family residences.
Okay.
What's behind the mayor's question, Don, is what can we do if we want to go in and have our codes be greener, and sort of green building codes, where the council could make those decisions? And you don't have to answer that because you'll just go into a bunch of examples, but I think what he's looking at is, is there a way to get from here to there by having staff go back and give the council some options on places in the code that could be thought of as being greener? And I know the answer is yes, with limitations.
Can I add on to that question? This may help you, Don. So it's my understanding, having gone through this a few times and worked with the Building Code Council, that these are the minimums. They, the resident can go higher, but as a city, we could have an overlay, a green building overlay, which would give them some guidance on going that extra mile. It wouldn't be, we couldn't require it unless we went through the State Building Code Council.
But we could facilitate it.
We could facilitate it.
That's exactly right. We, we could provide a voluntary, something that may provide incentive, but we cannot do it mandatory without state approval.
Okay. Tana?
Isn't there somewhere else in our work plan that we're, that's a separate item that we're going to be looking at a development code and adding some other components that we wanted to, so this is just, this is just kind of some technicalities and we're still looking at some policy changes later in the year where that might apply?
Not, it wouldn't be the building code.
Right, it would be more development.
We said we would, maybe referring to a couple of things. We said we could come back with some sort of sensible, easy adjustments to the Town Center code about the amenities and how a property owner could select a certain combination of amenities because we tend to silo them a little bit more than we want to. So we said we'd bring that back. It's not so much about green buildings as much as it's just about some more flexibility in addressing some of our interests for public benefit.
In July, in July, we're talking about green building.
And then, then there's a conversation about green buildings, which is about where are we going as a city with our buildings and other public buildings from sort of a high policy point of view? Where, where do we want to go?
The other thing that we talked about before the meeting, Rich, is you still got on the work plan, the, the permit fees study that, that has to be done as part of the work plan.
I just asked Scott about it, so I guess he'll answer it.
Thank you. Scott Greenberg, Development Services Director. We've hired FCS Group to work on that, and I believe they're going to get started around June 1st. They were finishing up another project. It'll take several months to have that finished, and we were planning on bringing that back to you, I believe, in September is the current schedule.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'm looking for a motion.
All right, I'll go for it. Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2 requiring, sorry, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, you know, this is always, not always, normally I don't, I vote against suspending the rules and I'll, requiring a second reading, that is. And I'll again vote against that. And, you know, given the complexity of what we're talking here and the very, the many interests of people on the island, I think having a second reading, just giving the folks out there who are into the construction business an opportunity to review these, it does no harm. It does no harm. So my recommendation is that we vote against suspending the council rules for the, for first or second reading on that, for that reason.
The man who said we could do all of this on consent to me.
I have to agree with Councilmember Cero. A lot of times, there are reasons to suspend them because of a timing issue, but since this doesn't go into effect till July 1st, I don't see why we would have to suspend it at this time and date and put it on consent for the next meeting. And if someone wanted to speak to it, they'd have time.
Don, could you help us understand whether this might be surprising somebody and what the implications of moving forward without another reading from a perspective of a builder in the community might be?
With respect to the construction codes, I'll talk to everything about the Fire Code right now. With those construction codes, again, they're mandated by the state, so we need to adopt those. The administrative changes that were made were very minor. I think there might have been five or six administrative changes to the construction codes on that. So from, from my standpoint, they're very, very minor. The changes were stuff like allowing wireless fire alarm systems to, to not require permits, you know, clarifying when flagpoles require permit and not, what height that's at.
Don, and to make clear for the council, if a builder, if we gave him another two weeks and they came in to testify that they didn't like the provision on page 14, paragraph 6, about a change in whatever, would the council have the authority to make a change there?
Unless it's the administrative, Chapter 1, they do not have the authority to make a change. And then from the Fire Code perspective.
From the Fire Code perspective, as you saw, the only option that we're asking the council to consider and adopt is Appendix J, so much like Don just suggested, that the body of the code is mandated by state law. We've been working with the construction industry for a long time, and there's no changes to the way we're doing business today, so I wouldn't expect that we would hear anything that we haven't already heard.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend Council Rules of Procedure 5.2, requiring a first and second reading of all ordinances. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, 5-2. Looking for another motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 13C-06, updating Title 17, construction codes as required by the state of Washington with an effective date of July 1st, 2013.
Second.
Discussion.
Or alternatively, no. No. No, he said... Oh, I see, okay. I'm sorry.
I know, I didn't say that.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We move to Agenda Bill 4838, PSE Natural Gas Franchise, second reading. Katie?
Katie Knight, your city attorney. I know this is equally scintillating as adopting codes. This, I don't have a presentation other than to point out that we've made the clarifying amendment requested by Councilmember Grousne, and as well as the suggested change in title to identify the true purpose of this franchise agreement as recommended by staff. We have Cody Olson again from PSE here to answer any additional questions. Second reading.
And if I remember, there was a title change and a, Dan had a minor language change. And those were done, and beyond that, I think there was no other discussion. We were just trying to clean that stuff up. Is there any further, well, let's go for a motion right now then unless there's...
I move to adopt ordinance number 13C-05, providing for a franchise agreement with PSE to permit the continued use of the city rights-of-way to install and operate facilities for the transmission, distribution, and sale of natural gas.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Katie, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, completes regular business. We move to other business. Councilmember of absences. None tonight? None new upcoming?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will be absent on July 15th.
All right. Sorry.
Dan, you're still going on the 20th?
Yeah, I'm still going both those days.
20th and...
July 15th.
Sorry, you're gone, May 20th, next meeting?
Yeah, I'm gone next week. And you're, you're gone also...
I'm gone the first one in August. Yes. Okay, plan the schedule, Rich.
Don't have anything to explain or add. It is as it stands. We have a prayer of light, it's been before the 20th.
Can I request, now that we moved the fireworks to the regular business?
You know I'm going to do that.
All right, so we'll make it regular. I would feel good about that too, so.
Sorry. Just, it's my last shot.
Just bringing a whole party up front.
Just the Kiwanis, Mike? Or both of them?
Oh, both, yeah.
Both of them?
Yeah.
Let's go for it. Okay.
I don't have a schedule in front of me, but Citizen of the Year...
Yes, coming.
Is it? Okay, good. Just have to make sure.
Get sound transit on the hot seat.
Yeah, we talked about this. You want to try and recollect where we were?
I know exactly where we are.
Then, recollect?
In talking with the mayor and deputy mayor, we concluded that until the dust starts to settle a little bit more on I-90, and we know where we are, particularly with the EIS and that process, we, we thought we would wait until further in the summer and the fall, just so we know a little bit more. It won't affect at all sound transit's timing or their work, they're just cruising along.
So this year, fall, or...
Yeah, unless there's some reason that suggests we shouldn't do it this year, I would assume we do it this year, but just later.
I think it's only important, Rich, that they understand that our, our delay in forcing them to come back here is not because we're losing interest in this thing, that if anything, we're...
Already had that conversation.
No, because I mean, this would be huge. I mean, this is going to be the next major fight if they stick with 2016.
They know that, they know it through and through, and they also know that Washdott has the, in this case, the exact same interest that we do. They want to minimize the amount of time it takes for them to construct and keep it open for as long as possible before they close it for construction. So, in that sense, the Washdott is an ally for us.
Okay, board appointments. Dick, can you give us an update on where we stand on that?
Actually, we just finished receiving our applications today, and we have enough people for all the positions. We're in the process of emailing out all the applications as well as those individuals that want to be reappointed to the various board liaisons, or staff liaisons, I should say. And we hope to have all that information collected into you and scheduled for the June 3rd meeting.
Good, good, thank you. Councilmember reports. Mr. Cero, you want to start? Tana?
Just, Rich, can you give the public update on the Verizon mess at Island Crest Park?
Oh, yeah, we continue to work with Verizon to get it done. Earlier today, I got a written report from Patrick Yamashita, the city engineer, and they have submitted plans. I think they got approved today. They are under direction from city staff that it's all to be wrapped up before the end of May, so Memorial Day weekend. Park staff is poised with the logs that you see out there to have them available to the landscape contractor that Verizon retains to finish the landscape plan. So, right now, as it stands, you'll see a lot of action between now and the end of the month, and they'll be done.
Are those trees coming down because of the new bike path or because of the root damage?
No, I don't think there's, no, there's no more trees coming down. It's just cleaning up the mess that they created when they put in the vault.
I saw some trees taped.
I know, I was told by Ann that there are diseased trees that either had come down or would come down as part of, in advance of trail construction, but... Well, I'll find out for you, Mike, because that may well be the case, and I just wasn't aware of that part of the project.
Yeah, if you could. Anything else? Dan? Jane?
Yeah, I've been out of town for the last couple of days and came back, and I was delighted to see the windows of the Mercer filled with art from the fine art showcase. Student art from throughout the district is on display there at the corner of 27th and 77th in vacant storefronts, and I want to commend the Cassians for putting, allowing the art in their windows. And it's an idea that the Chamber of Commerce has been real interested in doing as well. So I know they'll be working hopefully with property owners and landowners to continue to have art in windows that happen to be empty.
Jane, and Terry and I met last week and talked about this, and I'd love to be able to say, yeah, we jumped right on it, but...
It happened in spite of us.
Absolutely unconnected, can take no credit.
And just a brief update, I told you last time about King 5 Evening Magazine is going to do a little feature on Mercer Island. This is, it's part of the Secrets of series that they do. It's a little, it's only about three minutes long. They do secrets of different neighborhoods and, I guess, suburbs or whatever. So the Secrets of Mercer Islands is going to be on King 5 Evening Magazine with host Michael King at 7 o'clock on Friday, this coming Friday. So, find out what the secrets are.
Thank you, Jane. Debbie? Nothing? Mike?
I just want to apologize for not stopping off and taking a shower before I got in. But, there's a plug. It is bike to work and commute to work via bike all month, and I think the Bike to Work Day is May 20th. So, be, be patient out there, please, and be safe.
Are we biking to council?
We ought to do that.
We gotta, we gotta get that early?
This is so light.
Rich, back to you.
Yeah, I want to do just a quick reminder for the council of the memorial service for Aubrey Davis is coming up in two weeks. That's Saturday, I think it's the 18th, at Paramount Theater. And I'm, I'm going to be out of town at a niece's graduation, so I'm sorry, I'm not going to be there, but if we know of council members that are going, please let me know, and I will, I'll be in touch with the family between now and then and make sure that they know who is coming, and if there is a point, I don't know the format, but if there's a point at which somebody from the city has an opportunity to announce the renaming of the park, that would be a very appropriate thing to do. I have talked with Fred Jarrett and Judy Clivern, and they're both able to do that if that's, if that's what we asked. They are both past council members and mayors, but of course, first choice would go to any one of you.
Well, and that's something, we haven't actually had that conversation yet, so I can, but it wasn't clear whether we even were going to have a part in that service, so.
So if, and if the answer is yes, then you're able to.
I am, I believe, yeah. I have to go back, look at the calendar again, I guess, to confirm that. I had something, didn't write it down, it's gone, so next meeting. Okay, with that, we come to the end of other business, and we are going to head back into executive session. Councilmembers, what's on the agenda here is 30 minutes, but the question is, do, should we go ahead and stick with the 30? Should we, what do you think? You want a different number? Is 30 good?
30, thank you.
Okay. Very well. So let's assume we're going to take a 10-minute break so that people have a chance to break before we start, and we'll begin the executive session at 8:29 and return at 8:59. This is an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of application for public employment pursuant to RCW 42.30.110G, and will last approximately 30 minutes. Thank you.